If you will, all rise please. Every time I'll ask Commissioner Jones if you will have our implication in the pledge to the flag of our great nation.
Let's go to the Lord and pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day and numerous blessings you bestowed upon us. Lord, we ask that you take care of our military men and women and their families when they are away defending this great nation. And Lord, protect them from harm's way and return them safely to their loved ones. Lord, please continue to bless our county employees that provide services to Green County to help make it a better place to work and live. And dear God, we look to you tonight to guide us in the business presented to the commissioners this evening and provide each of us with the knowledge and wisdom to help make the best decision for all the citizens in Green County. Lord, all these things we ask in your son's own name. Amen. Join me in salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Fellow commissioners, you have the proposed agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there any for any changes to the proposed agenda?
Seeing no changes, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify so per saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The motion is carried unanimously. You also have the consent agenda. Is there need for any change in the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, if we look on the minutes, F County Manager number three. Mr. DeHager requested to appoint two members to the tree and regional advisory board. And I put a motion on the floor to nominate Commissioner Shackleton and County Manager to serve on that board. I'd like to rescind that motion.
I second. Have a motion and a second to rescind the previous motion. Is there any further discussion?
By the reason for this, Mr. Chairman, the bylaws retrieved have not all been worked out with East Point. And until we get their bylaws straightened out, I think we should just back off of this. And when they do get it straight, we will come back and redo this again.
Here are no further, excuse me. Here are no further discussions. Those in favor rescinding that motion signify so per saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The motion is carried unanimously.
Those changes made, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion. Do I have a second, sir? Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that?
I got some further discussion. Previous minutes state commission verse question addition of a topic being listed for the closed session. The county attorney explained the purpose of the ambition on the agenda. I'm not going to vote against it, but I feel that statement needs further clarification. By their question, why the addition of lawsuit was added to closed session, I was more concerned about why we had previously refused to list lawsuit as part of closed session and asked why we just now choose to add it when we have previously discussed the same lawsuit in the past. Additionally, I'm concerned about why the original lawsuit filed by Mr. Rantin was not included in this document on the county's financials. I just want to make sure that's the further discussion.
Any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of approval of consent agenda signify so per saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The motion is carried unanimously. We have no one for further comments. Green Central FFA proclamation for FFA week.
Hey, I'm Emily Harding. I'm Green Central's FFA advisor, one of the two. This is Aubrey Better. She is our president and she is going to request, kind of give y'all some updates and tell y'all about some stuff going on. Hi, my name is Aubrey and I am Green Central's FFA president. So far, since being in FFA for two years, I have participated in dairy judging and poultry judging. I enjoy and appreciate the opportunities that FFA has provided me. I'm here tonight to share some important events happening in our chapter. Mr. Paceauer has retired and Mr. Young has taken over his role. He teaches Horticulture 1 and 2, Agricultural Mechanics 1 and 2, and Agricultural Applications. Greenhouse sales are carrying on with the horticulture classes as usual. We currently have forty-two members in our FFA chapter and thirty active members. Animal projects taking place include pig projects and chicken projects. Pig show team members are beginning to compete and show their pigs in the upcoming Saturday and Sunday shows. Members are preparing for upcoming contests for members to develop their skills in the following areas. Foreiculture, agronomy, nursery landscape, entry to hort, milk quality, poultry, tool ID, and ag mechanics. This week is National FFA Week and the purpose of it is to promote FFA in agricultural education in our school and community. To celebrate National FFA Week, we are promoting FFA in agricultural education by dressing up in things that represent FFA such as USA Day, Dressing as Your Favorite Ag Career, and Wearing Blue and Gold for FFA attire. Activities planned include a community service project, an Ag Olympics contest, and a supporters breakfast we hope you all will attend this Friday, the twenty-third. We come tonight to share what we have been doing and some important things in our chapter in hopes of you proclaiming this week as National FFA Week for Green County.
Mr. Chairman, I move to declare National FFA Week for Green Central High School for this week, February seventeenth, twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
You're mighty fine looking young ladies and gentlemen out here.
You really are. And let's read the National FFA Week proclamation and then we will vote on the. Whereas, FFA and agricultural education provide a strong foundation for the youth of America and the future of food, fiber, and natural resource systems. And whereas, FFA promotes premier leadership, personal growth, and career success among its members. And whereas, agricultural education and FFA ensure extended supply of young professionals to meet the growing needs in the science, business, and technology of agriculture. And whereas, FFA motto, learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, living to serve, gives direction and purpose to these students who take an active role in succeeding in agricultural education. And whereas, FFA promotes citizenship, volunteerism, patriotism, and cooperation. Therefore, I do hereby designate the week of February the twenty-seventh through the twenty-fourth, February seventeenth through the twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, as National FFA Week. Those in favor of the motion signify so per saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The motion is carried. Thank you so much. Good to see you here. Come back and see us. Thank you.
Let me kind of get a picture to put in there.
Right.
Website. First track. Yeah, we got a cameraman.
Okay, you got a camera.
Anywhere else to back? Congratulations.
All right, one, two, three.
Thank you so much, y'all. Congratulations. Congratulations.
And I'd like to say when I was, when I was brought up, FFA was one of the largest organizations that we had.
About that?
Yeah.
Cool.
They were, I think they were the largest youth organization in the United States, I think. Is that right?
I'm sorry.
FFA still the largest youth organization?
Yes, sir, as far as I'm aware.
Yeah, okay, I thought it was. Congratulations to all of y'all.
And I will say that my brother was star farmer, chapter farmer. He was heavily involved in the FFA also. Uh, back in the mid-sixties.
I wish they could too. They could get a lot out of it later in life.
Ms. Wiggins. Tax collection report order to advertise. Wiggins. Is that what I said? I thought I said.
I'm pretty sure you did.
Well, I thought I said Wiggins, but anyhow. Don't know what I might say.
Um, the first item is the collection report and order to advertise. Included in your packet is the collection report for January. And that includes all good real and personal unpaid taxes. By statute, I'm required to report to you the amount of unpaid taxes for the current year that constitutes liens on just real property. And also an order will be dated for me to be able to advertise the tax liens. So the amount that constitutes the lien on just real property for the current year is six hundred and forty-five thousand, one twenty-four oh five.
And Mr. Chairman, I move to, uh, that tax collector ordered to advertise the tax liens.
Second. Have a motion to authorize that order to exercise the liens and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify so per saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The motion is carried unanimously. Okay?
The second item I have tonight is schedule the dates for the Board of Vigilization and Review. By statute, the Board of VNR cannot convene before the first Monday in April and no later than the first Monday in May. A adjournment has to be on before the third Monday after the first meeting. And also, these meetings must be advertised at least three weeks prior to convening. So therefore, I'm requesting that the Board of Vigilization and Review be scheduled to convene on April first and adjourn on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
You've heard a recommendation?
Move. Say move, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to a second.
It's April first, three fifteen.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify so per saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The motion is carried. Thank you, Ms. Wiggins. Once again, thank you, FFA.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Just a few short, short items for action this evening. Our first being the requested reappointment to the Joint Advisory Committee. East Carolina Council has requested the reappointment of Alice Barfield and Sharon Stone, uh, Sharon Harrison to that joint committee advisory committee.
Now wait a minute.
That's good, guy.
Look, look what you done.
That's good.
Thanks. Sharon Harrison to the Joint Community Advisory Committee. They are already trained. It's just, uh, it's the efficient selection. Would you agree?
Certainly.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
I like Sharon Stone. I said, that was good. Chairman, I move to appoint Alice Barfield and Sharon Harrison to the Joint Community Advisory Committee.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify so per saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you. My next item for action is a budget amendment for the ETSF fund. That's Emergency Telephone System Fund. They want to purchase a recorder. Recorder, I believe, is seventy thousand dollars. You'll notice in the budget amendment that this is not coming out of Fund eleven. This is Fund sixteen. This is a different fund. So this is a different funds fund balance, ETSF. And this is an eligible expense for that fund for our primary dispatch.
Move to approve the budget amendment for Emergency Telephone System Fund, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion and have a second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify so per saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you. Our next item for action is a service contract with Friendship Clothing Collection LLC. This is an organization that has reached out to us and they want to provide a bin at our landfill and our collection sites for clothing and books. They would actually pay us two to four cents per pound received that they collect. The collected goods would be used to donate to charities and other agencies like that. And if clothing received was not in usable order, then rags would be made and the same type of thing would be given to a charity for, for that purpose. Because it involved money, I didn't feel I had the authority to approve it myself. I didn't see any reason not to, so I'm bringing it to you. David, do you see any reason why it's not a good idea? I do know that, I recall in conversation, Nor County and Duplin County both participate. If you know more.
I talked with the Nor County lady over there and she said she hadn't had any problem with it so far. And they picked up stuff in a timely manner, so it wouldn't get piled all up and missed, you know, stuff like that. So it's worth a try before we call.
Sure.
Take that much, put the waste out of the waste stream. Right, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the service contract with Friendship Clothing Collection LLC.
Sure, question. Now, these clothing vendors, you see around who? Who is responsible for that?
Well, it could be various. There are different agencies, Salvation Army.
Goodwill. Goodwill.
Goodwill. There are a few that come to mind. Now, this would just be another option, another opportunity for someone to give in a, with the theme of giving to those less fortunate, et cetera. I hope that answers your question.
Yes.
Thank you.
I know a lot of times, you know, you see them pulling electric clothes outside of the game.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
While having objection to entering into agreement with this company, I recommend that administration obtain further details about the company returning the rate paid per pound. The current proposal states the rate accounted between two and four cents per pound, but does not consist of the criteria for choosing the rate. To ensure productive and consistent revenue for the county, I recommend requesting that larger petition that company would be used to separate whether it's volume based, market based, or some other factor. Furthermore, I want to encourage the county to continue to destroy petition of revenue stream. As you notice in Wayne County and other areas, you know, recycling, electronics, scrap metal is no use of a thing. If we can identify a right, petition over recycling, part of it, could be an extra revenue stream for us too, so encourage, keep looking.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify so per saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The motion is carried unanimously.
Hey. And Commissioner Burris, I can look into that for you and try to give you more detail. I'm just providing what they provided me.
I just want to make sure we know how, how did they confirm it, choose the four cents or no one? Make sure we get four cents. There was times we did.
I'm curious. I'd like to know what the Nor County gets, if it's the same or not.
It's the, it's the same.
Same thing. I think it was.
Two to four cent per pound and they, they are, what she told me, they have scale on the trucks that when they come in here with the container, they weigh it and put it on the truck. As long as it's used and recycled or whatever. You're right. We don't want it going back into the landfill if we can help.
Never will it help.
Okay, thank you. And this is not a item for action, but for discussion. Would you guys like to have a, a planning or a directional meeting type workshop, a retreat, anything of that nature before we get real heavy into the budget season? Maybe just renew some of the goals and initiatives we've had in the past. Maybe present some new ones, et cetera. Be glad to hear the input. Just have that meeting.
At this meeting here, can we discuss about the FISA?
Sure, sure. Yeah, perfect. Just looking for ideas from you all. I serve at your pleasure.
I'd suggest that we have a meeting for just us so we can understand the budget and all that stuff too. Cause you know, when we have, uh, we have our computer and we're trying to, we're trying to understand the budget I said and you know, we can't really focus on what the, the problem is, like, you know.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
It's good to see you.
So you just want me to maybe do a dual poll with you, set a date, and we'll?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, guys. That's all I had. Appreciate it.
I haven't gone, but I've been looking at the dates.
Try something else. Thank you.
Madam County Attorney, do you have any comments at this time?
No comments.
Commissioner reports recommendations. I do want to, I've got four items to bring before the board. Remembering that we do have, and it was, I think we talked about it, maybe, maybe we did, but the Black History Month Parade is going to be this coming Saturday, the twenty-fourth. Parade actually starts at two o'clock right out here in the, uh, between us and the Technology Center. At two o'clock on Saturday. I think a lineup starts back around twelve o'clock, actually. But, uh, two o'clock is when it kicks off. And also from our Senior Citizens Center, there's a Black History Month program that's going to be delivered on Thursday, the twenty-second, at ten a.m. and at seven p.m. It's the same program. It's going to be delivered twice. Ten o'clock in the morning for those who can attend at the daytime, seven o'clock at night for those who would like to attend at nighttime as well. Secondly, there's going to be a free hearing screening event and it's going to be held on Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, at the Senior Citizens Center. It's, uh, put on by the Division of Services for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing. There is going to be a screening event Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, at the Senior Citizens Center. And the time will be from nine a.m. to twelve p.m. It's going to be right there at the Senior Citizens Center, our center of excellence down there. And the cost, of course, is free. And again, it's put on by the Division of Services for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing. Nine o'clock a.m. to twelve p.m. Next Tuesday, the twenty-seventh. And lastly, I was definitely biased with the North Carolina Department of Insurance that the ship, Fraud Division, is going to offer a free Medicare seminar. And that's going to be on the, uh, at the Senior Citizens Center once again, but it's going to be on Thursday, the twenty-ninth. And that's going to be at eleven a.m. That will be eleven a.m., Thursday, the twenty-ninth.
On Medicare scams and fraud.
On Medicare scams and fraud. And, uh, that's one day out of four that we can have it on the twenty-ninth of February, isn't it?
It is the truth.
How about that? So we do have those, those four events scheduled into the future. Awesome. Okay. Other, uh, Commissioner reports and recommendations.
April the fifth, ten and under baseball team having a golf tournament. Cutter Creek, April the fifth, to raise the money to carry their children to Cooperstown. April the sixth, Shyne Fire Department's having their reverse drawing. That's one of their fundraisers.
This Friday, the Library's got a concert.
If I'm not mistaken, didn't FFA say that this Friday?
Yeah, this Friday, morning breakfast with those.
Eight and nine.
Eight and nine, right.
And where is that?
In the main, Ag Park.
Ag building?
Mm, yeah.
Any other Commissioner comments, recommendations?
I saw a couple pages ago that internet and phone lines were down. You could like to look at the past announcement on the camera social media page. You realize it's becoming a common occurrence. There's also a county employee that has an out of office message directing the center to contact another employee for phone and internet issue. I think this might be a good time to explore options and see if there's more reliable providers in our area. Because it's becoming a common occurrence that the phone and internet keep went out.
Can I ask the department? Can I ask which department?
Which department?
It's on my thing. Oh, okay.
Anything else? We can hold the video up. Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. The internet issue last week was a system wide issue. It wasn't a county owned issue, so that's what blooming and all of that. We've had some several issues, but they would have been non-county infrastructure issues.
Thanks, Eric. Thank you. That's good to know. Here are no other Commissioner reports and recommendations. Do I have a motion to get into closed session for the purpose of personnel?
Say move, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify so per saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The motion is carried. Going into closed session. When do we meet again?
March twelfth.
March 12th.